Well, good afternoon, everyone. This is a meeting of the System Planning Committee for the KC RHA. It's three oh six P M on the eleventh of May right now. As with all of our meetings, I'm going to have us ground ourselves in the land acknowledgement that we do. And I'm going to ask our board chair Simha Reddy to go ahead and give us that land acknowledgement.
Thank you, John. And we'd like to acknowledge the King County is located on the unceded traditional land of the Coast Salish peoples. We honor this land and its people's past and present, and we're committed to direct funding and resources to organizations led by and in support of native and indigenous people. Thank you, John, and I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you. And of course, we are grounded in the theory of change that the agency has adopted for how we are approaching the crisis of homelessness. For the meeting today, we are going to go over a portion of the the board meeting yesterday that we were not able to get to have a discussion relating to for potential policy area changes in the 10 year plan. Alexis is going to take us through that. I think she's going to also be able to provide us at least some of the thoughts that Executive Director or CEO Mark Doan's had on some of these so that we can share that Mark was unable to share it because we just simply ran out of time yesterday. So we're going to go over that. Have we're going to also go over discussion of staff work with governing board staff and how that has been progressing. And then we're going to look at the last elements of the the 10 year plan or five, sorry, five year plan framework that was released. We've gone over a couple of those elements. So it's going to be the last part of that. And I'm winging it here, but I believe it begins with page forty five of that document. So I'm going to turn it over to Alexis and let her lead us in a presentation. Alexis, did you want to start with the governing board issues or with those policy issues first, the the governing board discussion? Or the four policy issues that we were talking about?
I'll start with our governing committee colleagues feedback on the plan. So when, as we've been releasing elements as a part of this system planning committee, we've also been getting feedback from governing committee members and their respective staff as well. I know we made a commitment to this body to ask staff to be connecting the boards to make sure everybody's moving in tandem. And so happy to report that we've been, we've now received feedback from each of the governing committee kind of caucuses. Largely feedback has been along the lines of technical revisions to support clarity as well as some suggested changes related to regrouping or having a stronger through line through the plan, just to really emphasize some of the key features and elements of the plan. And so some of those changes include grouping those key activities that we talked about in our last meeting under the lens, under the three lenses, but being able to be deliberate and speak to what level of change that key action speaks to. They similarly shared that the long list of activities was hard to make through and wanted to make sure there was a stronger through line in the plan in terms of how we are organizing and taking up actions in those three levels and how they ultimately work towards addressing unsheltered homelessness. And so some other proposed changes there, we'll be talking to in today's meeting about some of the funding information. And I know there were a couple of technical revisions that mainly county colleagues wanting to clarify some and add in some information related to pasture funds. Right now, the plan just features and focuses on the the local amount of funding that has been provided, but they want to ensure that there is also identification and clearly articulating the amount of pasture funds that also come from the county and are administered by K C R H A. So we're doing a series of technical edits there. But I just wanted to provide that report today. We haven't heard of major substantive policy changes that were being proposed by the caucuses at this stage, but rather have gotten feedback related to technical revisions again for clarity, consistency, readability, and making sure that we're telling an accurate story about the nature of funding.
Great. Let me just ask a quick question and I'll ask other board members to ask other questions about that. I think one of the key changes here from the January draft is a strong recognition that that we want to bring people inside as quickly as possible. And you know that that is the, that's the main function that Casey, K C R H A has. And I think another part of it is that keeping more of the policy and operational the operational issues alive. So we heard a lot about THVs. We heard some about congregant care. We about the use of of the faith community in in this. So I guess my question is, are those issues that I think are in some ways major focus changes? Are those things that have been acceptable and received by the governing committee? Or at least their staff, I've never, I can remember never staff can't speak for an elected official, but they're very close to them.
We have received no pushback on those areas and in fact, more concurrence and appreciation that the feedback that was provided by the public and also went through their offices has been heard and has been addressed in this new version.
Great. Other questions for Alexis from our board members and we, you know, I guess we didn't do roll call, but I do, I'm going to get through it real quick. Christopher Ben and Simha are on as board members and I don't see other board members other than myself. So is that accurate?
Brandon is here as well.
Oh, Akisha. Okay, Akisha, not seeing that on my screen. I maybe just because I'm using the small screen today. So, okay, so we have five members of the the I B here present and we can just note when and if others join. Questions from I B members about the the governing board and the and how that review has gone. I, yeah, go ahead, Chris. None, none. Okay. Yeah, great. Okay, I have, I am doing my thing here where I am continually losing what I'm doing. I need to move something over on a different screen. I apologize. Just a sec. Okay, we'll just leave it like it is. Okay, so let's move on. We want to discuss the area that was in the packet yesterday, I think it was pages seven through nine in the I B board packet. And these are some suggested modification areas that have come out of this committee for the for the the final plan. And if you could, Alexis, if you could take us through those.
Absolutely. One moment, I'm going to share my screen. And I've also provided a link to today's panelists so they can pull up this information as well. This information is available on our website on the implementation board page. This memo details all of the background related to how we, all the work that's gone into developing the five year plan and identifies the role of the system planning committee and uplifts the policy changes that have been suggested out of subcommittee. It was our original intent at yesterday's full meeting of the implementation board to kind of put all of these policy changes on the table as a, for the full board can consider and discuss. So we can make sure that we are as staff moving in the direction that the board would like to see as we make edits to the plan. We wanted to spend a little bit of time just uplifting and touching on these are some of the policy considerations. Want to also voice and the memo doesn't tell us that there have been a number of technical revisions that have come out of this subcommittee as well that staff have been taking and incorporating. I've just looked a few, I know. You at the addition of utilization data was something that was lifted, if not at last week's meeting, the week before. For example, and we've gone in to add to that information additionally adding more clarifying language around metrics, what direction we're heading towards. So we've been adjusting and incorporating technical revisions, but some of these substantive policy matters that have been raised here, again, we wanted to put the board yesterday. And so just to review these, the four major policy and just that staff have identified through conversation have been I'm looking at shifting strategies to be more so directly aligned with and identifying how many units of of emergency housing, emergency shelter can be brought online in the next five years. Additionally, the articulation of services or more services needing to pivot to three sixty five, twenty four seven, reducing content related to some of the front end of the plan around just description of problem. And then finally, reducing or honing in the number of initiatives in the plan. So those were the four policy areas that staff have captured as a bit larger that we wanted to put before the full board and I'll turn it back to the chair.
Okay, so let's so let's go, I'm since number one was from Ben, I'm going to let him ask any questions that he might have regarding item one, which he brought forward. And then maybe you can talk about how that might or might not be able to be addressed in in a final plan, given that we need to have it out soon. Or how maybe some of those elements have already been addressed. Ben, did you have something to go?
Yeah, I actually think that it's well written the way it is. And I had a chance to speak with Alexis one on one the day before yesterday. Okay. I, I think this reflects my feedback. Well, I'd love to hear from others if if they have any questions or concerns.
So you're satisfied with the direction we're going?
Yes.
Okay. Alexis, you and Ben had that conversation. Do we? Do you think we're all on board? Because I know you've also been talking with other members of the I B.
I think the thing that so to to clarify the nature of the conversation, I know I tried to touch base with board members so they'd be ready to talk about these elements at yesterday's meeting. I think we're on the same page in terms of how this has, you know, how staff have captured the policy change. But we haven't heard from enough board members in candor about if there's concurrence around this this shift. And so that's the piece that I'd reflect back and would like to hear from members today.
Okay, so as I read this, the the key thing in this and Ben, you know, jump in if I'm wrong, but it looks like you are, you are wanting to know, and I think some of us have expressed this. You know what the reality is in terms of new units of shelter can be brought on board. Is that what you are looking for in years three and five?
Well, I would put it a little bit different. I think the way that I think about this, John, is that this this five year plan is is telling us which way we are going to point the battleship. And what's important for me is the battleship is pointed towards bringing as many people inside as possible. My understanding of the the physics of the matter is that without anybody, any place to bring people inside too, we cannot bring those people inside. And I think that that's really what's important for me to have acknowledged in the five year plan itself. In terms of how we actually bring those people inside, how fast we can bring them inside, what the cost of doing so will be, how are we going to measure that? All of those things I think are going to be very important to do in subsequent planning efforts. And in particular, in the management dashboards, board level dashboards that we can discuss in this committee, once we get through this five year plan. So and also in our annual budgeting process and our annual operating plan founding process, I think that that is, I would very much like for that to be a major theme of what we discuss, because I believe it is so critical to achieving the goals in our five year plan. That said, I I do think that the with this, if we're able to accept, if we're able to basically add to the list of strategies in years one and two and years three and five, that we need to bring people inside, that we need to identify how many we can bring inside, all those things that we can do that even in a high level. That gives us the room to go and in detail immediately after getting the five year plan done, go and build those detailed operating plans.
Others on on that, I'll share some thoughts in a second, but I want others to to hop in here if you have some, any comment.
Um, just to clarify, as a result, you know, out of the conversation, was there a change? Could you point to the specific changes in the plan, like in the way you sort of talk about it, or you could pull that up together?
Alexis, I think that's
Were there new or are changes or did you feel comfortable, I guess, with?
Or maybe click, let me ask my question real quick. This might, this might get to what you're saying. So my understanding is these are the directions that we have given, and now somebody has to go and change the plan according to these rights. This is not, this is not the change to the plan. This is just what is going to get changed to the plan. Does that make sense? So I don't think there, I've not seen like an actual change of the plan or anything like that.
But I think with, but I think with, pardon, but I think within the framework that we've been provided that we're talking about, we've seen that change of direction to be about emergency shelter.
Well, I mean, we have seen a a a significant and an affordable change in direction towards ending unsheltered homelessness and a clarity of purpose that we have now that I think will help enable our success. So that has already happened. My comment here encapsulated in this first piece is now that we've changed that direction, let's give ourselves the opening to go and actually start to make detailed dashboards around it in the next iteration of our plans after this five year plan is done. So I'm not, I don't feel a need to go and like micro at anything at this point. I think that we have to good. The plan has a list of many, many good ideas. I don't, I can't see any single one on there that I disagree with. I do think that we need to have more detailed operational planning, but I'm quite happy to do that outside of this five year plan.
Okay, Simha, any follow up there?
No, sorry, that's a clarification. Okay, and I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, Christopher or Akisha. Anything?
I'm no comments on my side.
Okay.
Stay on balance. I was actually pleased with it. It is a simpler, easier, it's not that it's easier to read makes it better, but it's easier to understand exactly where you're going. And it's a very complex problem. So I get that it takes a lot of work to say as few words as possible and still get to the objectives that you're trying to achieve. So I appreciated the rewrite and I appreciated kind of the the linearity of it. And I agree with Ben's point. There's probably a ton of nuances and dashboards underlying all that. But on the surface, it's a more cogent to me, easier to read, more business-esque, because there's not a lot additional schooling and education and and justifications. It gets kind of the meat of it. And you can follow along and for such a complex problem with as many moving parts, I think it's important to keep it simple. Or just because of it being so complex, it's easy to go down those rabbit holes. So I appreciated the rework. And it does kind of fire for me in all my conversations I've had with the board, but particularly as I've had many coffee conversations with Ben and others, it seems to fire on all the points that were concerns or hot buttons. They they may have already been there, but to your point, Alexis, they you part them out or parse them out and and with those just left standing, it reads to me as a cleaner document and seems to achieve what we're hoping for.
So I'll just make a quick comment. I think the document in and of itself speaks to the breadth of the problem. I think that's important that it do that. Where we are lacking at this point is saying something like in years three through five, we will bring on another X thousand units of emergency housing. The problem is we can't say that.
Right.
I mean, we, we don't know, we, we probably have a number that we would love to bring on. But what what is happening is that has to go through funding decisions by King County, funding decisions by the city of Seattle. In particular, as we bring other parts of the county into this and the other cities, I think an important element is going to be, and I think they're doing it now in their comprehensive plan reworks in many of the cities is looking at how many emergency housing beds need to be brought on within those cities. And I think that is a really key element because we don't have the ability of going out and printing money and doing that all on our own. We have to get that money mostly through the cities and through other agencies like the state. And I think a good example was what came up at the at the board meeting yesterday in approving the the concept around the apartment that will be brought on for, I think, to house fifty six people. So that is, that's growth there. And those are the ways that we can make that growth. Alexis, do you need anything more on that?
I see a board member ready.
Oh, yes.
I'm sorry, Alexis, yeah, go ahead. Go first.
I, I think I would only add as a step from a staff perspective that the the planning efforts continue. My team will be working on sub regional implementation planning. And you'll see in the years one and two section of the table, the alignment with cities comprehensive plans in which under House Bill twelve twenty, they are now required to do planning around emergency housing and P S H. That is going to be a critical piece in getting to this point around how much are we actually, or how many units are we actually hoping to bring online and having that coordinated work done with cities. So that was the only thing I was going to have send over to board member ready.
Simha.
Yeah, this this following is not intended to to change the plan in any way. And it's really for further down the road. And I just wanted to the idea with the the amount of money that we have now and, you know, with each additional dollar, right, like whether from city counties, other places in county, state or the federal government, we will need to bring on, you know, more shelter beds or more more temporary housing and or services. But the thing that I've, the thing that I really love about the plan now is a focus on care and efficiency, right, like the quality inefficiency. Because there is a lot of dead space in when, when you think about it, for sure, Ben is right, like, you know, the physics of it, right, like you need a certain amount of permanent housing to get people into. But for every like extra week or month that an apartment sits empty, right, for every extra day, week, month, year that somebody sits in a shelter because somebody like didn't know how to apply for social security, like, you know, income verification. That's, that's dead space and wasted, like. And so for every, like, you know, ten percent increase in efficiency, that's essentially like another five hundred beds for us, right? You know, now system of five thousand, so it is both the total number, but also that quality and efficiency that I think are important.
I, I couldn't agree more. I, I, I know I continue to talk a lot about increasing shelter as the path to reducing unsheltered homelessness. That is because I believe right now we need that immediately, things that, but there's absolutely no question that this is a system and a system has many levers. One of the levers is how many beds do you have now? Other levers are, how do you, how, what's your turnover in those beds? What is your, your, your cost per bed? You know, there's, there's so many other pieces of the system and we absolutely should have a a holistic view of that in the form of a drive retreat model or other operational tool that will allow us to to make sure our, our our system is working as well as it could. And that is not at all to say that the actual qual- quality as measured from a human experience perspective is not equally critical, right? We're, I, I, at no point do I suggest that we should compromise on that at all. So I, I think we need to look at all of that, right? That's, that's when this system is working and humming, we'll be able to have metrics and be able to monitor every aspect of that. How many beds do we have? How many people are coming in? How many are going out? What are some subjective measures of the quality? What are some objective measures of the quality? All that has to be there in that piece. So, so please don't, don't interpret my comments about the importance in increasing capacity to mean that that's, that's the end. As soon as we get enough capacity, I promise you I'll be harping on throughput and quality of other metrics as well.
Okay, so I think we're in agreement there. And I think staff has enough to work with on whether or whether or not we need to change a word or two or, you know, how to do that. Item number two was one that came from alternate board member, Jaja Floyd. This has to deal with the importance of having, I believe, shelter that's available and open twenty four hours a day, seven days a week. Some of the ability of being able to do input to shelters at various times. I know that we do have language within that that shows the importance of doing twenty four, seven, three sixty five. I think there's also language that recognizes not all shelter can be that way. And operationally, we ought to try to to work on shelter that's that, you know, that that may not fit that particular mold. But Alexis, can you just give us a little bit about what's in the plan? And whether or not you've been able to scope how something might, whether or not the plan really needs a change here?
Thank you for that and apologies. There was a bee in my apartment. Um, so to that end, um, this particular one, so the current language in the plan talks about healing based services. It's, it's a bit broad in the sense of talking about being able to set standards of care that are consistent with and serve the needs of disproportionately impacted populations and so on. So it's, it's a higher level term. There isn't explicit language that details a moving towards explicitly moving towards having more twenty four, seven, three sixty five models. But I think as staff, we were operating under the notion that they would include that if the board would like to see that more clearly articulated as like, we're like additional language that it's articulated, happy to do that. I think that's what's up for consideration.
Okay, clarification. Look, can I? I was going to ask Akisha as a member of L E C and working with Jaja, if she has any more to share on what the, what the expected outcome was here. Oh, Keisha, do you have anything? Yeah, okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm under the weather. I don't right now.
Okay. Oh, I, I know. I think that's fine. Take care of yourself if you're under the weather.
Thank you for even being here. Can I ask a clarifying question though? So we have services that are twenty four, seven, three sixty five. That's like the shelters. They they have staff. I think the key word I was, because I appreciated this comment, but I wasn't sure I understood. It's available. Does that mean, do we have, if somebody is past a curfew and the and the shelter has closed its doors? I remember when I was at Compass, there was a point in time that the doors were closed and you couldn't be allowed in depending on what shelter it was. Is, is the expectation and I don't know if you can read through the lines, if you knew this from your conversation with Jaja or Vokeshanosis, was it to have an alternate other than emergency rooms at Harborview where somebody could go between the hours of, let's say, ten AM and six AM when shelters would open its doors for services to people that are outside? Was that the expectation?
That was my understanding because as you just articulated, not all programs allow for entry like evening.
Yeah. And are there any currently? And so now that I understand what it is, what it is, do we have any in the system currently that or in Seattle, if you're in a state of emergency or if you're out, you really have nowhere to go between those, that blackout period, whatever that is between closing and opening. Is there anything currently in the system, in the network?
I wish that we were having this conversation six months from now when we were doing our update to the regional services database to pull in operating hours, because that is the next key area. So we've captured twenty categories, but having open hours is the next is like our, one of our stated improvement areas that we want to be able to have full insight on. I'd look to the other planners that they happen to be like off the top of their head, if they know.
But if I may jump in, I think I have a bit more context on Donna's original comment because she, she spread it up to me a few times one on one.
Okay.
Uh, so I think she's referring specifically to system advocates. And the, because there are shelters that do allow twenty four hour access. A lot of that is up to the individual shelter program and the operator and how they do their things. There's not really a, the the coordinate entry for all doesn't work twenty four seven, but it also doesn't do shelter placements. It's more of a P S H focused program. So it's really up to like whoever is bringing you to the shelter and if the shelter is available. And her point was around the system advocates, which are the R H A's own. I don't want to use the term, but they're our own outreach group, so to, so to speak, and shifting them to be able to move or operate more in twenty four seven model. And then I think potentially as part of the system rebid, just generally making sure that both shelter operators and outreach folks more broadly are working on twenty four seven schedule. I think that's, I think that's one of many points that ideally we'll consider as part of the system rebid.
Okay. Christopher, you brought up this concept in number three about reducing the the content. I also know that there are board members who want to make sure that we leave no stone unturned in what we mentioned. So I'm just curious what you were looking for there. There is a lot of content, a lot of specifics within the plan. So maybe There is a lot of content, a lot of specifics within the plan, so maybe weigh in just a little bit on on that one.
Without, thank you for that. Without suggesting how to write it, my recommendation from what limited thinking I have is that you move the educational pieces into appendixes and you leave the body of the what the action items would be in the plan. So if the plan is to build more shelters and the appendix is all about the narrative of the different kinds of shelters and the efficacy of them and all that other stuff, so that you can really make it a tighter document. And the the plan then can be discussed purely from the metrics of the plan and not all of the coloration of all the the appendix pieces, which are super important. But at one point, what we find ourselves as a board and it's just community at large is we start dissecting each individual piece. So I thought it would be what I have found easier with complex problems is to move some of the educational pieces into an appendices.
Okay, Alexis, do you want to not to put you in terms of debating with a board member, but can you tell me what the?
No, I'm wrong. That's great.
No, I I know I what the what the issues might be at this point of being able to do some of that or what perhaps may have been done?
No, I definitely appreciate you also want to voice. I see a board member Brandon has her hand raised, so I don't know if she has a response to to that.
Let's, oh, Okeisha, yeah, go ahead.
Like far as to what Chris was saying, I'm just wondering, when you say the educational pieces, do you mean like far as if there was to be, you know, more staff and things like that? Like far as educational pieces, far as giving them trained correctly so that we don't have some of the same issues far as, yes, we need more staff on deck and things like that. We all know that. But it's a matter of also how they treat the people that are coming into those spaces and, you know, make sure that they're being handled with care and equity and of things like that. So you say educational. That way, I'm leaving those two separate or not even words you might talk. I understand what you're saying, but when you say the educational piece, I'm wondering, you know, to make it tighter. Is that what you're referring to or is that a whole different educational piece that you're talking about?
Um, I think it's somewhat situational. The document was so big because it had a lot of kind of context and context is super important. But ultimately, there was, and I'm making this up, probably twenty percent of the document was the business plan. It felt like eighty percent of it was educational. I'm wondering if there was a way to possibly make it so you could lift up the the business plan part of it and pull it forward and leave the education. You have to have them both together eventually, so you understand why you're making a business plan. But it was interspersed. So it was somewhat of a editorial recommendation than it was about the content. The content ultimately all stands on its own two legs. I have questioned that question. Sometimes I was reading through it and I'm like, I'm getting educated and now I'm being here's what a solution could be. Now I'm back. So it was somewhat just a consistency issue. I think part of the problem, and this was, I'm guessing Alexis, written by dozens of people. And that's the the Frankenstein effect that happens when you have massive amount of copyrighters in a document.
Lots of content developers. I will share from staff perspective on this one. I know if to get to now this version of the plan, we took the previous version of the plan and did exactly this, did a lot of linking out, did a lot of creation of of appendices to try and dial in and get to this place where we were talking about problem statement, current state, and then what are we going to do about it? And we'll voice that this version of the plan is modeled off of the King County Regional Affordable Housing Task Force Report and Recommendations. Shout out to our King County colleagues that may be on the line, tried to model and look to a previous planning effort that was robust and lengthy. That did take some time to really focus in first on like the issue at hand. But we'll say that that plan included a appendix appendix that I know, once upon a time, I printed out my desk that was just like, at a glance, what is the action plan? And that was the thing that most people frankly looked at as it was in matrix crosswalk of what are the, I believe it was seven goal areas and what are the strategies underneath each of those goal areas and who is, who are the stakeholders that are leading those? And so they had a different setup of how they took or brought forward the action items, but had actually put like this succinct action plan element as a like appendix in that document. And so definitely well received and and want to be able to most uplift the easiest way to make sense of what it is we're going to be doing. I don't know if it's if it's if the board decides that it's more so appendixing out the front end content and just having the tables, then we're happy to move in that direction. But that's part of the reason why we have the current version as.
Thank you.
Okay. The there's no perfect here, I guess. And and I think some of us have different ideas about what this is. I I view it much more as a roadmap. And I do think of it as a document to educate. My concern is some of the education is very confusing. But that's because we have a lot of confusing numbers because of the way we count these things. And one of the great outcomes would be to move to a place where those numbers are far more consistent and more real. And I think that actually is kind of one of the ideas of of the plan. The so I'm I I don't think at this point, there's an awful lot. I don't know what's been done previously. I know a lot of things were moved into append appendices as a result of other. I don't know what can really be done at this point since we're we're working to get a final plan out tomorrow. But, you know, again, I'll I'll sort of leave that with staff. And I, again, I think there are differences of opinion among both IB and governing board members about what should be and what shouldn't be in the plan. But I think, again, this focus, this sort of laser focused toward emergency shelter for a large number of people is the key element in the plan. I don't know how others feel. Okay. Uh, and then there is the, yeah, go ahead, Simha. I'm sorry.
Sorry, John, you were gonna.
I was gonna move on to four, but if you have a comment on this, please do.
Yeah, I mean, overall, I like personal preference, I enjoyed reading it the way that it is. I liked the context and then being able to and given the timeframe, I like my inclination is to recommend that we not try to do a lot of shit thing again now. Like if if the content's staying the same, I don't feel strongly one way or the other about the the formatting is not quite the right word, but like the structure of the parentheses versus not.
Okay.
So I favor keeping it. And then the other one on the, just on on Josh's thoughts about the expansion. I do think it's appropriate like to to be a little bit more explicit than just healing focused and sort of and describing you know, a goal towards moving towards twenty four, some shelter and services. And we just be careful to not like lock ourselves in and therefore providers in via, you know, the next set of operational plans, right? Because if you ask every shelter to suddenly become, you know, able to to admit somebody twenty four seven, that's a change in staffing and that means more money and like that's hard. Like right now, like, you know, even Operation Night Watch, I don't think is open all night long, is it? Maybe I'm wrong, but but like there's there's very little in the way of like places you can go in the middle of that night. And it's that's a big shift. So I would just say generally, we should be moving in that direction. And in terms of outreach as well, right? Like we want better whatever hours people need help, like we want to be able to be there for them.
Yep. Um, for any other comment there? I am not seeing any. I'm going to move on to number four, and number four is a bit like number one, and it came from Ben, but it is kind of reducing and honing in on the number of initiatives. I think that we're also hearing that there are people who want to see all of the initiatives. So I don't know, Ben, I'll I'll let you uh, and maybe you covered some of that in your discussion with Alexis a day or two ago.
Yeah, I I think that if we just shift the way we think about the five year plan to being more of a a document which says this is the way we're pointing. Here are all the things that we know we need to do to get there. These are all things that came. Each one was well informed. It came from our community and our stakeholders. And we want to have a a a menu of things that we can then go and pick from when we go into operational plans. Then I think it's fine to leave leave this as as it is.
Yeah, I think your analogy of pointing the ship and making sure that the change that really came out of this was pointing the ship in that direction of emergency shelter and making that important. It is really hard to change the direction of a ship, so. And I think have so having it in the right direction, I think, is is critically important. Others?
I I really love, I like the way that Ben is is describing it, you know, like we get head in the right direction as we get more resources and can, you know, go full steam ahead, you know, we were going right way. I did have one question. This is more for Alexis, I guess.
Okay.
When, you know, when you talk about this approach of bringing everyone to safety, right? Like that or North Star, like getting everybody in safety. You know, in a do you do you use the term sub emergency shelter or temporary housing? Like, we've been trying to sort of make temporary housing happen. My worry about emergency shelters is that it conjures up a particular kind of thing. And temporary housing, and what we realize is like there's a wide variety, including tiny homes and other things that people wouldn't necessarily think of when they say emergency shelter. What are your thoughts, Alexis?
Absolutely. That's a fantastic question. And so when we think about, you're you're right, when we as staff talk about temporary housing, we it is like an umbrella for all of these intervention types. So whether it's a emergency shelter setting that may be congregate to also looking at some non congregant spaces that maybe have more of an emergency housing model to then we have things such as tiny house villages as well. We regard these as temporary spaces that folks are where they're inside and getting connected to that neck to those next steps for a permanent housing option. So using that as an umbrella term, but we as KCRHA staff, when we're looking at specific models, whether existing models or potential new models that could be brought online, we try and be deliberate and specific in our terminology.
I just wonder how I should talk about it. So thanks, Alexis.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okeisha, Christopher on this particular topic. Seeing no one joining in yet, let's move on to the last third of the 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 five year plan framework.
Happy to. Sure. Do you mind if I just make one clarifying note, just so we have staff know direction on adjusting for the draft that's to forthcoming? What I I pulled from that in deep appreciation for the conversation. Thank you all for for walking through this with us. And I think we as staff are aligned in how we reviewing this plan and want to commit that we have upcoming efforts such as the re procurement plan such as sub regional implementation plans and our own operational like annual work plans. So there's a lot coming to actualize this work. And so appreciate the conversation. I did hear that there was desire to have a more clear articulation within one of the initiatives about twenty four, seven as three sixty five. And I just want to make sure that we are, if everyone is here is in concurrence with that, happy to adjust for that change. See it. One thumb.
Yeah, I I I'm in concurrence. Um, let's make it a quick change. So, um, you know, the 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 more direct, the better.
Yeah, I I just, I was gonna make this comment earlier, but since you brought it up again, Alexis, I I think that Juanita's point was not that every shelter needs to be open twenty four, seven. It's that our system needs to operate twenty four, seven. And that probably means that there has to be somewhere to go at three in the morning. Doesn't mean that everywhere has to be open three in the morning.
That's a good clarification. Thanks, Ben.
Staff will work on that language. Thank you all.
Okay. Alexis, do you have a staff report for this last part? I'm going to mention to everyone that I have a month of May seventy five degree rule. And the seventy five degree rule means the time for the meeting is cut to seventy five percent. So our ending would be four thirty. So if we can keep that in mind, I would appreciate it. It's a gorgeous day.
Think staff appreciate that, too. We will get this going. I mean, I will be brief in my comments. This last section of the plan is focused on resources. And so at the top, we make an a additional identification of the stated projected need for temporary shelter, temporary housing units and the current status in King County. But also identify similar reports that have been done around identifying this need. We do cite again that report that I talked a little bit about earlier, which is the King County Regional Affordable Housing Task Force Report and Recommendations, which did identify a some stated need around about standing up a two hundred forty four thousand affordable housing units. And that is subsidizing or bringing online those units by twenty forty, I believe. So we make reference to that report really to draw a through line because that report does cover that zero to thirty AMI housing as well. And also cite some of the work that Affordable Housing Committee, which is tasked with implementing that plan. They've done some cost modeling work around estimating the costs to really address the housing prices facing the region, particularly addressing zero to fifty percent AMI and their projections that this would cost about twenty billion to preserve, construct and operate in service, forty four thousand homes. And then also make site to also previous work that was done notably twenty twenty McKinsey report. And so this is the introductory section to the resources section. What follows is then also tying to some of the state, the work that's happening on the the state level. So Washington State Department is a Department of Commerce, projections that one point one new million new homes will be needed across the state for the next twenty years with an identification of a ninety one thousand emergency housing that statewide. And so wanting to draw the work, the modeling work that's happened here at King County with also the statewide work that has been happening.
Okay, could I interrupt really for just a brief moment? This is not something new that KCRHA is doing. This is stating what other agencies have identified as the costs to bring on certain types of housing for people at certain average median incomes, right? So it's not the KCRHA's plan, it's what others have identified. Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. And trying to to really tie our our efforts to be in alignment with these other efforts to address affordable housing crises. But in full understanding, and we do make this statement here, that we recognize that we are tasked with crisis response related to homelessness. Where we also recognize that we need to be working in tandem with these other systems. And so this section then focuses on some elements of funding. So looking at what is the current fund funding scope that we have? And where does our current funding go to? And then should KCRHA receive new funding? Where would be some areas that we would invest that funding into? And so what follows is a very basic primer on our budget with this being a a three pronged look at our current budget. So our administration, the direct services for partnership for zero, and then the amount of our total budget that we just administer out to service providers. And so with that, we then go into some description onto the program base budget. And talking also about some of the new funding that has come under our purview, notably the North King County ILA. We have some technical revisions that need to go into here, so you will see that reflected in the version going out tomorrow. But what follows then is talking a bit about also that there are a number of local funding that is outside of KCRHA purview. Notably, a number of the regional communities outside of the city of Seattle have a separate funding process where they administer funding to local service providers. And then also provide some context here that many cities have utilized one time funding such from ARPA. And and with ARPA funds now, we we will, we will seek what may look like less investment into homelessness services when you look across the the two years. But in reality, it was because a number of cities had more to distribute out because of ARPA funds. And so placing those monies into context. What then follows is a description on direct services for partnership for zero. So talking about the funding that went into this this effort, the public private partnership and how partnership for zero operates from the use of system advocates to then the HCC model, the Housing Command Center model. And after that section, we have a breakdown of what we currently fund. I would lift up, this is directly from the approved budget that was that came out in December. And so this is verbatim, the exact same information. So the twenty twenty three approved budget. And what follows is a very And what follows is a very ugly pie chart. I promise we're facing. Look better, um, apologies to everybody in the public, but highlighting the, this is currently where the program expenditures go. Um, some feedback that we've also gotten from, from staff is, is also identifying how much of this is, is assigned and not flexible. Um, and how much of this do we have wiggle room to be able to adjust and play around with? And so that the following section here, which just identifies reprocurement is, is meant to set the stage. We know that reprocurement will be a part of implementing this plan. Um, and we'll speak to how much we can also adjust these pie slices. Um, but that is this section. I'm gonna pause here before going into the transforming how we fund programs. But that's the, and that takes you through the first seven pages of the chapters of the plan related to resources.
Question or comment from, uh, board members? I can't see hands right now, so just jump in.
Um, so I, I wanna just pause for a second on the, on these, these numbers. I, um, firstly, I want to acknowledge Alexis's masterful, um, masterful, uh, uh. Debate tactic of citing my own report, uh, in, in the context of this, the McKinsey report, which I still stand by, um. Uh, yeah, I wish, I, I know a hell of a lot more now than I did when, when I, and I wrote that with all the naivety of the management consultant. Talking about housing with the, from the perspective of a housing developer is very, very, very different. Um, but the, the, the challenge that I have with the numbers that we're, we're using here is that I, I, I think that they. Are reflective of a system that is failing. Right? Like this is, this is really a worst case scenario. These numbers are very, very big in terms of how much, uh, permanent. Support of housing, how much shelter, how much extremely low income housing we, we need to provide. And it assumes that we are not developing new models that allow people to get back on their feet. And be participants in our normal, uh, housing economy. It assumes that we, that our, uh, laws don't get reformed in such a way that we can build more. Of naturally affordable housing that allows people to get into there. It assumes we don't make progress on, on the, the drug treatment problems that we have. Uh, so I, I don't like, I'm not, I don't wanna slow this down at this point or anything like that. I just want the flag that. I, I truly hope that we never build anywhere near this amount of shelter that as is needed. Uh, as is said that we need in these plans, because the rest of our system will start to work in such a way that we no longer need it. Uh, so I, I, I don't, I don't think it's a bad thing to put out these really big numbers and say, look, this, this is a worst case thing that could happen. Now let's go figure out what can we do to try and, and, and avoid it. So I recognize that, that there may be, it may be an apparent contradiction in my statements that we need to build as much shelter as possible, but not as much shelters in this, in this plan. I, I, I think that there's a difference between the short term and the long-term, uh. Perspectives and I, and I am fundamentally still an optimist. I think that we can do better than what, um, what these assessments say that we need. Uh, but ultimately we have to take these things one, one day at a time. And right now we know our shelters are full and we have to add more capacity because there's people waiting outside. So I hope that clarifies a little bit of what may have been a contradiction from, from my perspective. And, uh, explains how I'm interpreting the, the, these numbers that are going into this plan that I, that I can support.
Other comments?
Hey, I just wanted to share that I, I really appreciate that comment and I really second that. That this is, this is where we are now and that we, if we're doing better, we won't need all. In, in particular, I always say that the number that bothers that I never really fully got behind the twenty-two thousand temporary housing units needed. Um, and really under the. The methodology that the state provided, again, it like it comes from the state, makes sense, reason, it's, it's a number. Um, but you're right, it, it doesn't speak to the future or any change really in our inefficiency and improvement. Um, so I'm. Hopeful that we don't ever need that. Uh, also, I think Medicaid needs to be capitalized. Sorry.
Okay, good catch. Other comment? Okisha? Anything?
No sir.
Okay, thank you. I, I'll make just a, a quick comment. I also want to point out that the, kind of the horizon for this is five years. Um, and we do need to increase both the efficiency, the effectiveness, but we also need to increase the number of. Um, if you wanna call them beds, if you wanna call them units, if you wanna call them THVs. However, we do that, we need to make increase because we don't have enough shelters or fill, are, are full. And we need to have some other ways of sheltering, but over a five-year period. Um, yeah, I think, I think it's important that we have a strong focus on that. So. I'll stop there. Any other comments? And if not, we will move on, we'll continue moving on. All right, let's, uh, let's continue, uh, Alexis.
Thank you all. So the following section talks a bit about the funding transformation. And I know you all as a body have had now briefing from Corporation for Supportive Housing. This section details some of the discussion about opportunities for being able to leverage, um, Medicaid funding, foundational community supports and so on. But we also talk about other federal resources that, um, folks that may be experiencing homelessness are also eligible for. And trying to create efficiency within our system to make sure that folks are accessing benefits that they're, that they're eligible for. Um, so there is a, a identification of some, uh, the three-phase approach that, um, we've been working with CSH to do. To be able to maximize Medicaid tenancy supports for King County. Um, and some identification of opportunities here. And then we also talk about some federal grant opportunities that could supplement the homelessness response system through the department, the health, uh. Pardon me, the Federal Department of Health and Human Services, as well as looking at potential opportunities through the Department of Justice. And so on. We also talk a bit about, um, opportunities and, uh, within, um, the, the VA and resources available to folks. Um, who are experiencing homelessness, who are also, also at veteran status. And the ability, the opportunities for us to support their ability to leverage their benefits. And so that's in essence, this section and the last section, I'll actually pause before the last section. Anything on this piece?
No. Okay, there is, there was an answer. I was just responding to Ben. He has to leave because of an emergency. So we're gonna let him go. Um, any other comment on this? I heard Christopher say no.
I, I just really like that, you know, the, uh. You're, you know, discussion around veteran coordination, um, uh, this. When you've got resources and you've got good partners, like you can make a big difference. And like King County Veterans Program is phenomenal as WDVA, like they're really outstanding partners.
Okay. All right, um. I am not hearing anybody else. Let's keep going. Uh, looks like we're down to, uh, maybe the last, uh, uh, item.
The last couple of pages, so this.
Exactly.
So we've identified some priority areas, uh, or pardon me, priority strategies should new funding become available. So again, being very clear, not wanting to wander into the territory of this serving as a budget proposal, but rather setting this stage and saying. In alignment with this plan, should new funding become available, here are some areas that KCRHA will put that money towards. And these include expanding non-congregate shelter and emergency housing beds and units. Expanding medical recuperation and high acuity programs. Implementing, uh, a pilot cash transfer program for families with children and/or youth and young adult populations. Scaling diversion resources with the goal of diverting six percent or roughly fourteen hundred households into homelessness. And then pivoting severe weather response, um, from the. On and off kind of severe weather response into seasonal weather response. And then increasing that flexible funding to support staff wages, staff wellness, sign-on bonuses, compensation for vicarious trauma, trauma. Compensation for exposure to hazards and communicable diseases, and then system capacity building. And what we've done here is we've identified key actions and then we've gone through and created a couple examples of impact. Uh, when you look at, uh, potential scale of each of these based on, um. What we worked with our finance team just to better identify what approximate costs would be based on how much a potential scale option would be. And I would uplift here one example, when we looked at, um, pilot check cash transfer programs. We looked at a current cash transfer program that's operating out of Oregon right now, um, where they provide. Monthly stipends of, uh, twelve fifty to fifty house, uh, monthly. And then put this for fifty households as a pilot. And so just wanted to create some examples of what, you know, in a approximate dollar figure could translate into in terms of expanding service for these areas.
Uh, questions, comments?
Yeah, I definitely, um. Appreciate, um, you know, the, the strategies like far as displaying, you know, examples of things like that. That's important because, um, eh, I feel like it breaks down this, you know, to not only public, but. Service providers and, and people like that, like it's not just money being thrown, which has been like a narrative. And almost to me a truth, you know, money's just been thrown around here, here, here. And so I really like that, you know, there's a model in place in, you know, strategic methods. To where money is going and how it's been utilized and there's more thought and process. You know, in place and, um. I just really appreciate that. Um, I think it's about the details. It's about the training. It's about individualized. Um, barriers for different people going through different things. And so we put, you know, place money in those places, you know, um. You know, we don't just want a whole bunch of money thrown at one. One issue or one problem, we really want to sit down and say, where is this money going? Mine's going there. And how can I help the people as opposed to, you know, uh, fix, uh, uh, wanna fix all type of things? Um, and so I'm super appreciate that breakdown.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Thank you, um. Christopher and Simha, you're the board members still left along with me. I'll let, uh, either of the two of you go.
I'm good, Simha.
I'm gonna keep my mouth shut for once.
Um, I'll, I'll, I'll just say something. I think that there, there are so many good elements of this. Um, but I think that this is really an important element of the thought about if you can get more resources. Where are the places you would put that and how would they improve the system? Um, as I said, we can't print money. We don't have any specific revenue streams. We don't have any direct taxation sources. So we can't really do anything as an agency about that. But I think that idea of where, and, and Okisha brings this up and it's really, really important. Where can we put this? What the effect will be? And how can we get people sheltered and moving on, uh, with their lives, I think needs to be an important element. Um, realizing also that, um. Um. You know, it, it just can't come across as, um. Well, this is what we need to do, so therefore add up these numbers and that's, um, and that's what we're asking for. I think it's a, it's a good way of prioritizing, um. Ways that we can improve what we have. And I think the public, I think the service agencies. And I think most of all, those people who are living unsheltered really appreciate that we want to do something more, uh, to shelter people.
And might I also add, it does provide hope, you know, um. Coming from someone who is a little more, you know, um, cultural and, and more of a healing. You know, supportive aspect of soul, like I do feel like that hope and feeling like, you know, okay, we're finally being heard. I feel like that, that really does project onto the public and, and house community. Because it shows, hey, like they're finally taking time to realize like, you know. Uh, like you, you mentioned, like, it's not something overnight, maybe not going on trees. But it, it says, you know, this is what we're working on in the future. Like these are things that we can start doing to prioritize the needs, you know? So it's not like we're just gonna continue on the way we've been doing things. But this is the, these are our goals, the plan, you know, in the, in the months and years to come. This is how things are going to be done. Yes, we've been listening. Yes, we've taken note. Yes, we've been, you know, conjuring and, you know, trying to figure these things out. So it provides, you know, that comfort of, okay, we're getting them all rolling the right way. You know, some things have been dismantled and we're rebuilding it and reestablishing. You know, um, procedures that work for. The better in the change that will, um, help eventually end, you know, the crisis, you know? So I'm just, just want to acknowledge that, you know, hope is a big thing. It gives some, it gives everyone a, a reason to live in what, you know, more from their lives instead of feeling like, you know. Today's just another day while I'm going through these circumstances and there is nothing for me out there. There is no hope. So I think that, um. Having these things in place does give people that freedom to dream beyond, you know, their circumstances, of circumstances. And the measures I really do, um, like that for them. In balance.
Okay, Sha, thank you, um, for sharing that, um. Uh, that is actually a very good way of putting it. Um, it does provide hope. Um, it does provide a path forward, but I think it also provides a, uh, a call to action. And I think that's what is an important element of this. I'm just going to, to say from what I am hearing here, from what Alexis has told us, what, uh, we've heard from. Governing board staff, what we've heard from the work that we have done. That we're coalescing around a five-year plan to get this agency moving forward and getting to solutions. As an implementation board, we can't really do much more than oversight and ask, uh, our governing board if they adopt this plan. I really want the governing board, which is made up mostly of elected officials, uh, representing Seattle, King County, the suburban cities. I want them to, I, I hope that they will take up that mantle. And take a look at those ways that we can expand and provide solutions to that hope that this plan brings. Um. That would be. A really important outcome of, of this process. Any other comments from board members today? And Alexis, do we have anything more that we need to cover?
Nothing more from a staff perspective. I would look to our clerk, Austin, to give us a rundown of next dates and actions.
Perfect. Yeah, that, I was just going to go to that. Any, any other things from, um, uh, Simha or from Christopher?
Hmm.
Okay, great. Um, uh, Austin, can you give us kind of a rundown of, uh? Uh, when, when we meet again, when people can see, uh, when people can finally see, uh, final or. Final draft documents, if you will, that are, you know, ready for potentially some amendments, but most likely pretty much in a final form.
Yeah, so, um, for the next meeting, uh, is gonna be. Sorry, for the next meeting is the sixteenth for the Budget Committee meeting, um, as we all know, that's gonna be on contracts. Um, and then the nineteenth, uh, so next Friday, uh, is gonna be the special session on voting on the, uh, five-year plan. Um, for the amendments, I am, Simha, I just created the copy. I'm gonna send it over to you. Um, to send to the board, um, the amendment process will be as simple as, um, emailing me. If you have any emails of the section you need to amend, what you need to amend and, uh, any rationale behind the amendment. The, it'll be a simple process where I just craft it into like a resolution style format. And then we will have all of those in. The due date for all amendment requests should be the seventeenth, so. Um, Wednesday at five PM. That gives me one to two days to write all the resolutions if there are any lagging behind. Um, and then we will have that all ready and posted. We're not gonna do walk-on amendments, um, just for simplicity reasons. All them will be written as well as we can have a live edit document of like. Did Amendment A pass, but C fail? And then we just immediately do that and get it ready. So. Um, so yeah, so that is the overview. As for date, I think everything now is released. Is that correct Alexis? I'm looking. Is that correct, Alexis? I'm looking to you for date on the packet.
Yes, we're working on materials for tomorrow.
Tomorrow, tomorrow, yes.
So let me, let me clarify that. That will, will those be documents that are placed on the website? And where would people find those if that's the case? If not, if that's just coming to Implementation Board and Governing Board, when will they become public?
I can, I can speak to this in terms of what board members can expect to receive, and then what will be also going public. So tomorrow, board members can expect to receive two versions of the revised plan. The first is a red-lined version, just to illustrate what the key changes between the version we've been walking through across the weeks and what the revised version looks like, because it'll just be easier to see the changes that have happened. And then you'll be receiving a clean copy with line items, or sorry, with line numbers, apologies, to support the amendment process. The governing committee will be receiving those documents as well. And these will be posted as a part of your meeting packet for your special meeting, so they will be on our website. Now, the team would like to send out a special note to the entire network to let folks know about this, but that will likely happen on Monday, because I think we know what happens to Friday emails. And so getting it out Monday morning, but at the very least, it will technically be publicly accessible on Friday as a part of the meeting packet.
Yep, and then that'll be on the Implementation Board meeting page, not the System Planning page where most of you have gotten the information here. It'll be on the main IB meetings page.
Austin, when the packet goes out, would you, would you please send a note to everybody on the board emphasizing that points about if you would, if they would like to have a resolution or amendment, or if they would like to have an amendment, then if they need to be working with you, and I think Alexis probably to address those concerns, get the resolution together.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I'll definitely be saying that in the email as well.
And it needs to happen before the meeting.
Yes, it will happen, yes.
I mean, for our board members to emphasize that.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, and just for the public to understand, it would take a IB board member to offer an amendment. So if there's somebody who would like to have an amendment, they have specific language, it would still require, it's not that the public just puts in an amendment. It's that they might put an amendment in or request an amendment, but a board member would have to essentially be a sponsor of the amendment. That's more of a question than I just made it as more of a declarative comment. So that's more of a question.
Yes, to that, yes, it would be, yes, these, it'll be open mostly to members. But if members of the public want to reach out and to a member to get that moved along, we totally can do that, for sure.
Okay.
Nelson, if you can put your, once again, your email into the chat, so people know how to reach the Implementation Board through you.
My very long name and email, yes.
Anything else? So if not, I want to thank the IB board members for the work that they have put into this. This has been actually a very rewarding process. For me, I hope it's been a rewarding process for you to be able to walk through these in heavy detail. The work that you've done is incredible, and I think has made this a better plan to our staff. And I know not all of the staff of the agency is on here. I really want to offer my sincere thanks for the amount of work that you've done. It really is amazing work. I think we're on the cusp of being able to have a plan that is put in place. Still a little bit more work to do on that to the public, to the agencies, to individuals who have, you know, worked really hard to have us understand what they would like to see. I also want to thank them. I think this has been a very large, very important public process on one of the most vexing issues that this region faces. I don't want to put a downer on it, but we're just talking about the problem in King County, not in the other 39 and 38 counties of the state. And each one of those counties has a problem in terms of homelessness and emergency shelter. So I'm not putting a downer on it in that, in that regard. But I think the magnitude of this becomes even larger when, when you consider that. So again, thank you to everyone for the work that you have done. To all of you who are out there who are mothers, Happy Mother's Day coming up this Sunday. Moms are really important to us. I lost mine in 1984. I've now been alive longer than, without her than I was with her. But they set the tone for who you are. So I just want to say that very, very much Happy Mother's Day to all the on-staff and those of you who are there in the public. Any other business to come before the committee today? I am hearing none, so I will declare our meeting of the committee adjourned. Thank you so much for your work. Have a beautiful day and a beautiful weekend.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.